No.
He's just behind the blue side.
Blue side?
Mm-hmm.
Blue side?
Yes, he's just a blank.
Are you going Saturday?
Yes.
How long is your time? Where they can't make it old enough to stay by themselves, I'll be too old.
Right, yeah, I'm just gonna be staying at Grandma's.
Just beginning the field.
I can manage the paperwork.
Well, that's, that's it, without saptic and without Steadman.
You know, they probably figured why they get a lot of getting just won't bother. And I might take the job. She first put this out. It's a grant that they give up season count. Yeah, it was quite, it was quite a bit of money, but, and they hooked out and have a, requested and replied for it. And it was because we're such a pain. She said, we'd have work not to apply for.
Pay them better not. You gotta apply. Thirty-five thousand for state on materials and paving. Which is, it's almost balance. Fifteen for machines at a time. Ten, so that's fifty. Ten or so. We're still working on, and then firefighters, if I were looking into whether or not machine time for firefighters, plus whatever Steadman comes up with, still bring in.
Did you print off the, uh?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
And I forgot to send you these, those are just the special mail, the real short.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll call our meeting to order. Show seven oh three. Tom and myself are here, Bruce is in Root and will be here shortly. Coming soon. With that, I'm sure you wouldn't mind perhaps if we start on the next. So why don't we start off with a copy of the September twenty-seven U.S. Like a little dark tone?
Mm-hmm. Sure. Second motion accepted.
Second motion. Any further discussion?
No.
On the favor?
Aye.
So now it's second, a little short and sweet. October twelfth.
Second motion accepted, once minutes for next October four.
Second motion. Any further discussion?
No.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Uh, operations update. Again, kind of dovetailing on what we talked about last time. You can see the majority of my update has to do with FEMA. FEMA was here Friday. Obi, Obi Lianos from FEMA via Puerto Rico came to see us with a local contractor. Last Friday, just before we start on Obi's evaluation, the majority of the repairs associated with the damage from Irene and Lee have been completed. The largest single repair to the town was Whitbeck Road that actually washed away two hundred feet of paved road, washed out twice, once from Irene, and then we filled it to open the road up for emergency purposes gravel. Then Lee hit, it washed a second time with the quantity of rain that we received. We probably spent fifteen thousand dollars alone on that one repair, ten thousand which was paid when we had the actual invoice. So we took Obi out to inspect that in the hopes that he might want to intervene on the pipe, but unfortunately there's nothing to quantify in terms of the pipe being damaged. So it's not an eligible repair mitigation. You have to have damage. The fact that it's substandard in terms of size does not necessarily make you eligible. So that was the one. The largest outstanding repair we have is Steadman Road, which when we went over to see that, and Obi did bring a consulting engineer with him who takes, who's a local guy out of Torrington, um, might have his name, leave it for Tom for now. He went through and he thought the damage was sufficient enough that he is coming back with his mitigation team of engineers to evaluate the site. So while we know that we could immediately qualify for resurfacing money, you know, similar to the cost that we have expended for Whitbeck Road, considering the steep slopes, the water, the weight associated with that. Our engineers have recommended closing, we've put up permanent big blocks, you know, the, uh, the, uh, I call them mafia blocks, what do they call it? Just the big concrete blocks block the road. And they should be coming back as early as next week, so we're in the pipeline there and hopefully we may qualify for something above and beyond.
Just resurfacing.
Than just resurfacing, because really we know this pro, this road's been a problem for a long time and you never know what we will qualify for. I also bought him over to the Carpenter Road Bridge at Grexex, again, while the bridge is really old and in inferior condition. You know, it's just, it's not, not that we could quantify. It's, it's in lousy shape and we all look at each other going, boy, it'd be nice if the deck just washed away because you can get rid of the blood.
You don't want damage from hurricane.
But in that case, and that's a difficult fix.
Yeah.
Because the whole Carpenter Road in that area, plus across Route two oh two, all flooded out, you'd have to lift Carpenter Road up, you know, in some cases, three to four feet to prevent, it's, it just overruns, not just the bridge, the entirety of a length of road. So right now we've documented roughly sixty thousand storm-related damages without Steadman Road, and when they asked us to put a number on what we thought the entirety would, I ballparked a hundred thousand. So with that, we know that we've spent the money so far, the machine time and the labor is expenditures that we normally pay for hourly rates and overtime, but the thirty-five thousand for sand and gravel and paving obviously gets absorbed out of our budget even if we were to get a check, we can't spend revenue. So it puts a little chink into the highway budget and we'll have to adjust our.
What would they normally pay out for that? Would they pay labor or just materials?
They, they pay, it's odd because we're getting two different stories. This storm is being treated differently than what the January storm is, which I just got, we just got, remember the last time I told you that we got the email for the approval? We did just get the check from FEMA came in, thirty-six thousand five forty-nine fifty-eight. They reimbursed it seventy-five percent. For the January storm, they only qualified overtime, machine time during the storm, overtime labor and materials. In this, if you're making permanent repairs, and I think that may be the difference, permanent repairs to roads or facilities, utilities, whatever, then straight time caps, regular time. So we point out all our time cards, all the, we have all the, the bills of late that have the slips of when we're picking up deliveries and we know who was working on what jobs. And we're going through whoever, it's not, everybody was qualified because we didn't have everybody on the, on the repair work, different people were doing different jobs, but primarily Doug and Joe and George and in some cases Steve and Chris were also working on, but a guy like Don Burden, who's usually in the parks, doesn't typically do remediation work, so he doesn't qualify. So anyway, that will go on and the next update will really come when FEMA comes back and tells us what to do. Because until we have some further information, we're just kind of in a holding pattern with that. So, so obviously you can see just tons of paperwork with that. So second update is the pension plan. The pension changes from the defined benefit plan to the money purchase plan four oh one A that we negotiated with our bargain units continues. It is a large paperwork undertaking, not necessarily to deal with the existing full-time employees, the difficulty really is attributable to the part-timers who come in in one job description, they might be a custodian or for that matter, they could be a lifeguard, they could be a registrar voter, they could be a part-time clerical, but as they take on more and more responsibilities and they gain a thousand hours a year that's required by the current pension plan to be vested to garner now the four oh one A, how do you go about paying those people? And what happens if they do a thousand hours one year and not the next? And how, when, when do these payments start and when do they end? Is there a planned date? It's a lot of dotting i's and crossing t's so that we know that we have a specific plan in place so that everybody gets treated fairly from this point forward. All new employees know exactly the path required to receive the benefit. It's not gray and leaving Christine with a quandary of questions from somebody who started, you know, the difficulty of our position is the pension plan is called, includes something that the pensioners downstairs call cliff vesting. You have to make a thousand hours a year, five years in a row to qualify for the pension. Well, what happens when somebody makes it in the new hires, somebody makes a thousand hours one year and doesn't make it the next?
It's a thousand every year.
It's a thousand, it has to be fair to those old employees and how do you go forward and how do you document that all has to be spelled out. So they're down there actually doing the, you know, scenarios of different employees and what happens and, you know, how you document the whole thing so that there's actually a...
So if they're under a thousand hours for like year two, they have to?
They start over.
They start over?
Yeah. They would be paid for the one year, but they would, in the way it stands now, if you're gonna be fair to all the people that did, you know, there have been employees in the past that have worked for the town who have worked four years, missed the fifth year.
So if you, if you worked four hours, a thousand hours for four years, then you missed the fifth year, then you start from scratch?
That's the way it's been. That's not to say that that can't be changed in the future, but that's what the current system is now.
That's historic.
It's been that way for generations. So I, I was trying to match the old system to the new system. And as I was just explaining to the group downstairs is that these are things that are negotiated every three years. If the unions feel that it's unfair, they're, they're able to come back to the table in three years and renegotiate and change that. So anyway, matching the system and, and doing it fairly will require monitoring, that's what it's all about, deferrals and making sure collections, when people choose to, if existing employees choose to go in, how they get paid, they could, if anyone wants to go out of the D E P plan, they could go into the new plan. But all new employees will go from that day forward and they'll go in. You gotta monitor the hours, know the hours and know when they would get paid and then know if they don't make the hours, you know? So if you don't make the hours, you don't make the thing. It's not like you're trying to manipulate it or not, but some people have variable jobs, you know? It's just the nature of the beast, so.
Okay.
Okay. Brody Park, the, the Fieldhouse roof was bid out. I think I told you last time it was going out, I gave you the spec, the bids came in twenty-five to thirty-five thousand dollars. The twenty-five thousand was the, to triage the existing roof for the existing pitch. The thirty-five thousand was the, what we discussed all the way through the budget cycle, raise the grade. So it looks like we're leaning towards that. We are working with the contractors, working another job now, it's gonna be starting soon when we perhaps have the other. So we're working on a lot of...
Were you, you said fifty thousand, sorry for that?
Right. So we're clearly under budget and some of that money was supposed to go, if we, if we come in under budget to rec for using for field studies and things like that. But right now we're under, we're trying to work with the contractor to see if instead of putting new rafters in, we could do engineered trusses. That might be a better solution. The, the spec has the rafters. Don't mean to use those terms. Joyce's rafters, I get coagulated sometimes. The recommission septic system study, we've got the flow rates in that we monitored throughout the summer. The flow rates show thirty-four hundred to four thousand gallons per day, as we suspected all along. It is an intensive use classified within the, there's jurisdictions of either Farmington Valley Health, Department of Public Health or D E P. Bruce, hey Bruce, how are you? That's okay. Chris reminded me to go back, now Bruce is here, about the, before we end our updates to do the pension plan recommendation. Okay? The, the flow rate, according to our engineer, is such that Farmington Valley Health District is not legally able to approve the system, it requires an engineered solution, as we suspected all along. We're moving with Dennis and Don Burden, we're gonna meet with Todd tomorrow to, to move the plan forward and come up with a solution on how we might wanna proceed. But obviously with the kind of enrollment that we have in the camps up there, we have to do something more significant than what was originally pitched. So we're going forward with that. Also with regard to Brody South on one of our updates for Bill Case, as you recall, last time we had, we were waiting for some information, I think there was something in the minutes about...
Yeah, there was. The attorney pushed it back to us.
Right, the attorney has recommended that we do not move forward with the plan as presented, he's indicated that there was something back in the deed that you found in the seventies that that lot should only have roughly four acres and not the six that's being proposed. So there's questionable legal title here, what we would be, if we chose to take the existing plan to a town meeting, it would show the, the current property owner's estimate at six, but Chip is unsure that that is the correct path to take at this time, so we're meeting with him Thursday to discuss how to proceed on this, but what he's saying now is that he does not want the town to move forward in with the current plan as presented. It's not saying that we don't wanna codify the line at some point, the question is where does the line go? So we had tax sale today, we being the town, obviously this is the tax collector, tax collectors domain, there were four properties on the, on the block for sale, five oh three East Cotton Hill, that was seventy-plus thousand dollars in arrear, it attained a bid of thirty-five thousand dollars and was sold. Sixty-eight Winchester Road, which is a, a piece of land with a barn owed ten thousand dollars, ten thousand four, and did not receive a bid, it has been removed, from what we understand is being marketed with an abutting property, so we may get the taxes back on that. Eighty-one Winchester Road was owed thirty-three thousand dollars to the town. A very wet piece on the opposite side of Winchester Road sold for fifteen thousand dollars. And then Stag Mountain Road, the area that is the road, owed thirty-four hundred dollars plus or minus, it sold to the homeowners association, which I guess it was in the hands of the prior developer, the homeowners association stepped up and paid that bill.
For their amount?
Yeah. So the one that's hanging out there, Linda will continue to work with them and she's hopeful that if the entire property sells, then she'll get her money back. But at some point, you know, you have to move forward and get these things back on the tax rolls and that was her recommendation and I, I listened to all her reasoning and she was sound in it. We don't wanna be homeowners, the, there are tax liens that go beyond, there was IRS liens on the five, uh, five oh three East Cotton Hill road piece. The, all of these have six-month requirements that you can't occupy or use the property, the deed doesn't officially, there's a redemption period for the prior, for the current owner. And with the IRS property on five oh three East Cotton Hill, there's a nine-month redemption period. So it's not certain that this, these sales will take effect, that the prior owners have the opportunity to go in there. Arrowhead Drive, the paving project that we're working on is moving along, it should be paved for next week. The, there's been a lot of drainage and catch basins done on that, so the guys are finally actually in there filling in the spots where they've cut along the edges of the catch basins and done the drainage work. The town meeting last week was great, we had about seventy people show up, overwhelming approval of the Steel Road project, which we had talked about for at least a year. So we're happy with that. The, the one thing that we'll include for the minutes is that the overwhelming sentiment of the people that attended is take your time and do the job right. There was a lot of talk about why it came forward in October and, and we talked about, you know, obviously we've asked that the board of finance proceed with care, they were worried about revenues and it took a little bit of time. I don't think the people down on Steel Road are really concerned about when it gets paved, it's a matter of making sure that it's done right, the drainage all gets the attention it needs because that's what, we'll make it last, so we're happy with that. Carl Nielsen, little update on the cell rehabilitation I told you guys about, we did finally receive a check from the state of Connecticut from the judicial branch, the special services division for nine thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents, which I believe brings this sad chapter to a close for our town. I think it's a sum total of roughly forty thousand dollars in forfeiture and or restitution that was paid back for the time card situation that we got involved in last year and, you know, we move on. So, and then a couple of small ones, we have the downtown grant and the main street grant, Ron Du Four was the low bidder on that, I think I might have updated you on that, he is moving forward and supposed to have that done by the end of the month. Our banking switch to Northwest continues, I believe we're down, we had at least twenty-five accounts with Bank, Bank of America, we're down to six remaining. Some of them are a little harder to do than others, like the, like the W P C A, for example, that does, you know, quarterly buildings and stuff, you have to time it right to get out of there so every, so there's no bounce checks or things like that or money going in the wrong direction. I did mention Jim Parkus at our last meeting, we're gonna be placed in the position of having to replace our E M D. Jim, I can't tell you, he is so uniquely qualified for that job and has the time to attend all the meetings, so he's gonna be a loss, I know that he's looking forward to going south, but we are gonna miss him. The crosswalk, I don't know if anybody noticed, on Route two nineteen coming down by the library was finally moved as part of the paving project, it had been talked about by the prior administration to try to move that, everybody on the street over there was looking to move it over because it was too close, the sightlines were too short. We did get the state to do it as a part of their repave of Route two nineteen, still not happy with the quality of that, but we're gonna need some funding in the budget to get the ADA, you know, ends of that done. We had Tranquility Salon and the Old Waring Building opened up in the past month. The, it was a really nice time, we had ribbon cutting with Erica and then she had after-hours, which I caught the tail end of, really beautiful salon inside, really thankful for her to come to Hartford. And our two state grants, the Cedar Lane and the Niles Road project are moving along. The Cedar Lane guys have been out at least two or three times trying to work with Roger to engineer, you know, the project to see how we go about which areas will be reclaimed and which areas will not. In terms of them, it's always really a fight. You know, they're all state guys and they wanna make roads into state roads, not that that's a bad thing, but, you know, all of a sudden the price balloons to three hundred and fifty thousand dollar job and we're doing Steel Road, you know, where we know that we could reclaim a mile, one, one in the tenth miles for two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and, you know, some of their estimates are three hundred plus thousand dollars and even when you, or four hundred thousand dollars, and even when you're only paying twenty percent, you sit there and go, well, I could do it two inches away for what you're talking about instead of chip seals, so.
Sometimes it's cheaper to let those grants go.
Yeah, well, that's ultimately what's gonna happen.
Yeah.
And I know you guys are, are moving on and we're gonna have a new board, but I think Bruce, you know, and Tom, you've probably seen in the past, is that you gotta at least do your due diligence and check it to see if there's some happy medium, try to get them to temper it because the money is there to preserve the condition of these local roads, it's not meant to turn them into state highways and you gotta try to create a blend for those guys.
Well, they, they try to get everything up to Ashcoff standards, which requires sightlines as if it's a sixty-five mile an hour road, which might upset some of the residents.
Oh, yeah.
And you start trading it. Now, I've always been in support of, you know, at least looking at these grants.
Right.
We haven't done that in the past.
Well, we just, we just submitted the final, we had to go back, we submitted summary accident data for Niles Road and they want the complete full accident reports. Of course, those full accident reports get submitted to D O T in a different division, but now we gotta go recopy them again and get certified copies and send them in. We, we send everything in and Christine's comment to the guy, Sebastian Caramella, Caramella?
Caramella, yeah.
Is, you know, he wants to know in detail what the plan of remediation is, wants to suspend engineering money. And what we want him to do is evaluate the accident data to see if we qualify.
Yeah.
So you have a, you know, which king first, chicken or the egg? We're trying to say, listen, why don't you tell us that this road qualifies for funding before we go out and spend engineering money? Because if you're not gonna pay us, we don't wanna use five thousand dollars in engineering money, it's, it's a different mindset, you know, we're even watch every nickel and these guys are... You know, we're going to watch every nickel, and these guys are doing different, so.
I tried really hard to explain to them, as if you're asking us to build an engineering plan, we're not ready to do that yet.
Yeah, spend the money on the engineering plant so they can reject it.
Yeah. So, on top of that, we had, I did get a call from ONG. They have a piece of land down on Stedman Road, they want to know if the town is interested in pursuing, it's in a little gravel bank, unusually shaped parcel in terms of the physical characteristics, it's really the side hill of a bank. They're not interested in necessarily giving it away, but it is, it's definitely just a side of an old gravel bank. And I think it's something worth taking a look at. Obviously, I think it'll overrun you guys' term in office, but I think it's worth mentioning. I did meet with Ken Ferrogi out there about a week ago.
For gravel?
Well, I don't know that you could actually take much more gravel out of it than if that's already been taken, because of the slope rights, you start pushing into the bank, and then...
How much land is it worth? Why do they want the town?
Little over three acres, they have them used.
All of it is three acres?
Yeah. And it abuts MDC to the north. So, it's the next property, it's Skip Rogers' house and then MDC, and then this piece, and then Corey Chamberlough down there. So, I think it's something worth talking about and looking at, but it really, I think, is a function of price.
As a footnote, the town has kind of used that piece of property every now and then for school bus turnarounds and things like that. So, we were wondering if the town just wanted to own it, because we have had to go into temporary lease agreements with them.
Yeah. That's where the turnaround is now for the...
With the school buses?
The slope failure. So, that's where our buses will do their turnarounds right now. There's a little pave cut off there, so. Okay. Okay. The pension board, who handles all of our investments for our...
That's what Lucy was just, that's what she was just talking about. No recommendations tonight.
Okay.
They don't want a motion tonight. They have some more discussion today. So, table that, she said.
Okay. They're looking for some guidance on how the money will be invested and things as we move forward and actually codify the plan, so that they want to make sure that we're all on the same page, and they were going to look for us to have a little discussion on it. But if they're not ready to proceed, we can do that for the next one.
She said they could table that for them.
Okay. Any discussion on updates? Okay. I kind of included the FEMA update in there, so I think we hit two and three. Appointments to boards and commissions. We have...
Actually, that's why Penny Muller is here.
Penny is here for our commission on aging. You have some recommendations for us, Penny? I know we reported that Lucy retired.
I told you, she should be tired. I'd like to nominate or recommend that Rich St. John be appointed as a regular member, and Kathleen Pappas be appointed as an alternate.
Both of these would fill vacancies.
Yeah. And that leaves us with, still with two vacancies. Another regular person and another alternate. And then that'll bring us up to the full board of seven and two.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Thank you.
Motion to approve Rich St. John for full. Kathleen as alternate. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Show it as unanimous.
So, now, do you let them know they have to go down and see Donna to get sworn out?
Yes, they have to.
Okay.
Go on and see Donna.
Your next meeting is November...
It's the second Wednesday.
The second Wednesday, because you changed it for...
It's a special meeting in November.
All right, make sure it gets up before then.
Appointment of Assistant Animal Control Officer Les didn't make it to Maceus.
Les is on vacation.
The Les and Danny, our plant typically handle the majority of our calls. They had Corey Chamberlough, who I just mentioned, who lives on Stedman, did some work for them, as well as some other people who are not as active as they used to be. So, they have somebody who, and don't forget now, this is somewhat of a regional effort we share with Barhamstead, and sometimes these folks answer calls and help out. I actually had a conversation with Frank Chiermonti also, who's having a little bit of trouble over in his town, and I said, you know, we pay per call, basically. We have, it's an hourly basis of mileage. So, I told him, it's not like you can say, no, I don't have a real problem, if you can strike a bargain with our guys, you know, as long as they're here for us, it's fine. But we have a recommendation for...
His name is Ron Besse, B-E-S-S-E-T-T-E. He is currently the deputy animal control officer in Barhamstead.
Okay.
And he works closely with Les already, and Les is recommending that he also be appointed in New Hartford.
So?
Second, second. All in favor?
I thought I'd be standing here just to help catch the pig.
Yeah.
Are you interested in me telling you?
No, that was bad enough.
I told you the pail tray. Pail over there.
No, I told you the pail tray.
Hey, we used to have pigs.
I hear that was an eventful moment.
We actually had to use a trash tanker to open the pig's head.
It's that big.
Did you ever have that one?
No.
The pig from the farm.
You got to get a pig, you got to get the rope on the hind leg, and you steer it with that, and you have a pail, and usually they back out of the pail though. Otherwise, they lock up and you can't move them.
They're just so stubborn.
So, there was a pig that was running around since the hurricane in the swamps, and he got out of by a little road. So, unfortunately, I was home. So, I got involved, I got Frank McCarthy involved.
So, you got requisitioned to help out?
Yeah. Frank donated the use of this, you know, that should be something the town should recognize, Frank maybe some of the thanks for the use of this trailer. Just without the trailer, it would have been a real problem.
Oh, my goodness. The fact that it's hung out there for three or four weeks without...
I think the two ACOs were happy that Frank was there, George Phillips was there, and myself. We're the only people with pig experience.
Oh, yeah.
Can I tell you, it was the strangest phone call I've done.
I bet, yeah.
I just get a phone call saying, I'm driving down their road, and there's a pig in front of my car. And I was like, who do I call? And I said, I got to call Les.
Yeah.
It was about a four-hundred-foot pound solid. Big, you know?
Wow. Okay. We have tax refunds from...
Yes, you do.
I didn't bring my calculators, I'll go get them.
Oh, you have quite a few of them. You want to see a good do your math for some? There you go.
One, two. Run through them quick.
I don't think it's tall or anything. Motion to approve this presented by the tax law group.
Okay. We have two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
I usually list them anyways in the chat.
Three.
Three.
Yeah.
I'm a...
Four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Okay. There's eight the first time, nine the second. Two. Six, seven, eight, nine. Okay, we have nine requests for tax refunds from our tax collector. Anybody like to make a motion to approve this present? You did?
Yeah.
Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anybody opposed? No? Show it as unanimous, and we'll pass them under the signatures.
Christine, you got extra writing apparatus?
The tax sale today garnered nine individuals, not including myself, four children. What's that? I mean, you think a good building lot for fifteen thousand dollars? Okay. Opportunity for public comment on agenda items.
I'm here from the Rec Commission, representing the Rec Commission. Be very brief.
Are you commenting on an agenda item, Dave?
I think so. I know that I put in a request within a day or two of the last Board of Finance meeting to be on the agenda, it's apparently just slipped through the cracks, and I know I talked to Lila about it, she said it would be passed along, but to carry out the nineteen sixty-seven mandate as established by the town, when they created the Rec Commission, the Commission needs a discretionary capital expenditure account to do the necessary research to properly present recreational needs to the town. Professional research to support needs is not limited to new ventures, but major repairs and maintenance frequently require professional research prior to properly defining the need. And without a defined need, we can't design a proper solution. When our capital account is underfunded, we can only use our collective knowledge to estimate proper repairs and the potential costs of those repairs. The Rec Commission is not only in charge of the obvious youth-oriented team sports, which have exploded in scope since nineteen sixty-seven, but orchestrated extensive programs year-round for New Hartford residents of all ages. These programs, camps, West Hill pond usage, soccer training, concerts, Brookshire Hall rental, and other small events too numerous to mention, generate in excess of a hundred thousand dollars of additional income annually to the town. We provide part-time work during the summer for as many as thirty-six young people in our summer camps and lake responsibilities. These additional programs, as I am sure you know from Dennis' reports, are expected to generate eight thousand dollars in revenue above and beyond the expenses. Especially in light of our budgetary times, the quality of life a town can offer to its residents is of vital importance. These programs are a major piece of the extraordinary quality of life we are able to provide for the residents of New Hartford. We can approach another budget period, as we approach another budget period, I can't stress enough the necessity of restating a reasonable discretionary capital budget for the Recreation Commission. At the last Board of Finance meeting, and again here tonight, I learned the Selectmen were very successful in getting a bid of thirty-five thousand to accomplish the most expensive projected repairs to the fieldhouse roof. It's my understanding that the Selectmen had allocated fifty thousand of recreation capital budget for fiscal year two thousand eleven, twelve for this project. Can the Rec Commission expect the excess fifteen thousand to be redirected to discretionary, to the discretion of the Commission? Thank you very much for your time.
When we pitched the fifty thousand dollar roof job to the town, and I talked about that project with both you and the chairman, and I don't know if this request comes from the Rec Commission or from you solely.
I'm representing our commission.
So, the Rec Commission has voted on this request? The understanding was, is that any excess funds would be used for field studies associated with finding new recreation fields, wasn't that our discussion? The search for a space that might help a future home for...
There was an informal discussion, and as of the Board of Finance meeting, I'm learning these ropes, I'm new to this whole political thing, and frequently misstepped in my approaches, and I learned at the Board of Finance meeting that informal discussions really don't amount to much, that they need to be formalized, and that's what I'm attempting to do, to correct some of my prior errors. An informal discussion, we had discussed the total one hundred and forty thousand, and that perhaps there would be excesses in that total picture that might be available to do studies on future recreation sites, yes.
The thing you have to remember is that while you hear a bid of thirty-five thousand dollars for the roof project, you have to remember is that there's also engineering costs, and we're not done with the project yet. So, as I told you, and the people of the town had voted on it, that there was money there to be at your disposal for what we pitched to the people of the town when they voted, which was field studies and things that went to similar uses, like the apples-to-apples comparison of the Northwest Conservation District, natural resources inventory that was done on South Brody, should the Rec Commission propose finding a new home for fields, that we want to make sure that we're having an apples-to-apples comparison, perhaps engineering and things like that. I'm not opposed to those things, because I think they fall within the realm of what the people of the town voted on. But the thing is, is that we're not done with the fieldhouse roof job yet. And I know that the engineering and the specs and the bidding alone were another four thousand dollars. So, when you think fifteen, you have to remember, it's gross, and then net, you have, all the expenditures have to come in before the job is done. So, you know, let's see where the project lands, I would say. I don't think you get a whole lot of resistance from this board in terms of using excess funds, because that's what we said we would do when we went to the people of the town to vote, is that the Rec Commission would have access to that to do some work. But I think that when you start talking about blanket authority for any old project, I don't know that that falls within the realm of what we ask the people to consider.
I don't think the Rec Commission has ever had, nor has it expected to have, blanket authority for any old project. I believe that for the five years I've been on the Commission, and that seemed to be really a tradition, every single project that was ever presented, I believe probably five thousand dollars or more was voted on the Commission and then presented to the Selectmen for approval. So, I don't see why that would change. I don't believe we've ever done any old project. And in this day and age, I mean, there was some criticism, comments, appropriate comments, about how to better present a project to the Selectmen and perhaps the Board of Finance, but without, it's a catch-twenty-two situation. If we don't have the funding to do the study that the Selectmen undertook with respect to the roof, the best we can do is, among the knowledge that's on the board, take an educated guess with respect to what needs to be done to improve it, and then how much that's going to cost. And without a reasonable discretionary capital fund, now certainly historically, when we've had to approach that, the cost of engineering has been estimated and presented to the Board of Selectmen, and we need, that we're going to use of our capital budget, we're going to use five thousand dollars to do this particular study. But without a capital budget at all, we can't even approach the Selectmen in saying, we need this study done, and it's going to cost five thousand, and we have the money available to do it, because we don't have any money available. And that's all water over the dam, and I'm doing the best I can to avoid these problems or better understand how to deal with these issues in future budgets.
Well, does anybody here have a problem with, I mean, that's the way we presented it, was that the Rec Commission would have some discretion to use that for field studies and things like that for athletic fields. I mean, assuming the project comes out.
Surplus funds?
If there's surplus funds, I don't know.
Yeah, you can find using surplus funds, giving back to where...
But if it's not specifically spelled out in the budget, you give most of capital reserve.
Right.
You can't, you can't spend capital discretionary with this, asking for specific reasons. I mean, if that was in the budget, as I recall it was.
Right. There is an abbreviated note in the capital budget that says, "Fieldhouse Rec Commission's Field Studies," or something like that, I can't remember the exact title, we could go check the budget, but I don't...
You really shouldn't call it discretionary capital spending, because that term really doesn't...
It's not really discretionary.
Doesn't legally exist.
Yeah, it isn't discretionary.
There is not discretionary capital.
Sorry about that, as I said, I'm learning.
And this is the discussion...
You got to be careful what you call it.
Right, I understand that.
The money's going back to you.
Or specific budgets or legal document, specific...
It was a long description, I remember.
Right. I mean, it's appropriate, I mean, it's not a problem. I mean, it's not a problem.
No, I don't think it's a, it's an issue. Because of the description, whatever it was.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Penny? Mrs. Anderson?
Can I ask a question about the fieldhouse? Is there a specific purpose that the fieldhouse is going to be put to after the roof is is fixed? I I've been to all of the meetings and I still am not clear on that. Dan, whatever purpose you have in mind for.
The current purpose, I think, as we talked about repeatedly, even if we were to just, in my personal opinion, not one that reflects everybody here, is that even if we were to save strictly for storage purposes, a 6,400 square foot building, just for the sum total of everything we put in it, we couldn't possibly afford to replace it. I mean, if it was a hundred dollars a square foot to rebuild a 6,400, I think we all know that we're talking about money that's outside of our budget parameters these times. The the Rec Commission has numerous references to future use and their capital plan. If you look out into the third or fourth year in their capital plan, they make reference to indoor volleyball, soccer and baseball. You know, I think that I read some of Dennis's emails of possibly indoor performances or maybe I might be confusing with some of the information I got from the Friends of Brody website because I know that they, there's competing entities here and different people have different visions. I don't think it's up to the Board of Selectmen to start telling, you know, specific uses. I know that we do use portions of it and we store the street sweeper there and we, you know, all of the park equipment is there and the canoes and the benches and the picnic tables and all those other things that go into Rec get stored there during the wintertime. And, you know, frankly, the town does need storage space. But, you know, where it goes from here, I think saving the building is step one. Stop the bleeding. Put a roof on the building in a way that we know that the building's going to be there for a while. We've got, we've done the structural evaluation of the turnbuckles. We've gotten an engineer spec designed by our engineers. The structural evaluation came and said that the building was fine. We went to the length. We had them design a spec to raise the pitch of the roof because we knew that the low-pitch roof was a problem. It's it's been that way for years. They've used roll roof. It rips off because of the high winds. So now we have a recommendation from an engineer that has a bid attached to it that says we can raise the pitch. That's what we went through the budget. We discussed countless times, I don't know how many times, we went to the people of the town. The people of the town voted and agreed with the project, you know, to save the building. So, you know, from my personal perspective, I think it's a good investment to, you know, stop the bleeding, so to speak, get the roof sealed to the weather. And, you know, we have it for our expressant uses and we decide where we go from here. I think we're all learning from, you know, the water survey that we had Dennis do all summer long to do the jurisdiction about how many gallons of water are used at Brody Park on a daily basis. You know, 3,400 to 4,000 gallons per day. It's big. You know, so the DEP is probably going to be involved in our future in the, in terms of designing the specifications. We're going to need engineering help. And I think that's going to make us answer some tough questions about these little cabins up there and how we go forward. What's the cost of putting a septic system on for these little buildings? You know, is there a cost benefit of, you know, we have the little nurses and the arts and crafts and the different buildings there that we use? But, you know, would it be better served to put that type of septic system onto the fieldhouse and have it one big building, you know, type of thing? I mean, I think that all, all possibilities have to be explored. So I'm sure it'll be a subject of debate for for the next meeting. I did send John all the attachments of all these correspondence with all of the flow rates and the engineer's information. And I think we're going to have to really evaluate it because I know that the Board of Finances and and the Board of Selectmen coming in are going to chime in on, you know, what's the appropriate level of funding for all of these structures? And what's the vision? You know, where's it going? But but in the in the here and now, even if it were a different vision for a different structure, I still think that the fieldhouse at 6,400 square feet offers opportunities to the people of the town by putting a roof on it, even if it were just used for storage. You know, obviously, it's not the most attractive structure from the outside. Maybe we can do a little dress up. I know there's some vinyl siding in there. But but it does offer utility to the town and it's an asset. So we save it, move on. But I don't know. And any, any other?
Well, it's just my, my concern is the type of roof you put on a storage building will be very different from the type of roof you would put on a building that's going to be used for theater and, you know, for, you know, for kids to have programs in. And I, I, that was really my question. You know, you can get a standing seam roof, I'm sure, for a lot less money than than what we're paying for this fieldhouse. So that's why I was trying to hold in.
That's not true. Standing seam roof is the most expensive option. It's the exact opposite. We had, we did look at a standing seam roof and had engineered estimates. It's very expensive. We would have liked to, the Rec Commission asked me to research insulation in a standing seam roof and it turned out to be over 100,000 dollars.
Would you need insulated if it were just for storage? I'm just throwing those questions out, you know.
That that was something that the Rec Commission specifically asked me to do because it became in the future an option they asked me to look into. And the insulation alone was was, if memory serves me correctly, I'm usually pretty good on my numbers, 16,000 dollars for the gable portion was was the estimate. But then you have to re-roof it. Either you choose to go on to a, back to an asphalt or a standing seam. The difference being is that the Rec Commission's thought process on it is that it's a beautiful vaulted ceiling with tongue-in-groove strip roof or planks in there now. And they wanted to preserve that. They didn't want to have to install insulation to the interior.
I think there's a Friends of Brody who, who really.
It was the Rec Commission's request.
Yeah, it was. Well, the Friends of Brody, they have also requested.
They may be similar. And and I can see the point. It is a beautiful ceiling. But I think in the here and now, we we will deal with the low-pitched wing walls and we get the building sealed to the weather and hopefully we can get a good portion of it. I did, just for FYI, while we're on the subject, I did talk to the contractor, Ed Kostak's doing it. And I said, you know, it's a big job, so let's deal with one side at a time because we don't want to open it up and get snow, you know, and just get inundated. Focus on one side at a time, close it up, just be common sense about it instead of taking the roof off, you know, basically half the building and get caught like that. But.
Have we used the roof in the last?
The asphalt, the asphalt shingles is a 30-year good rate. You know, whereas the low pitch, the, that roll roofing is only good for, they say, 10 years. But if it get really windy weather, it could rip right off. So. All right. Any other business to come before the board?
The ordinance, is that going to be in a future town meeting?
The ordinance? That's, we're going to have, we're going to have a winter meeting. I think if we get to the point where we do, we have the registrars want us to approve their thing. We have the volunteer tax abatement issue. We have the Cooley subdivision still hanging out there with a gift to the town. We have this Bill Case thing hanging out there on Brody Park. We still have a number of different issues to come before us that, I mean, we still haven't gotten the legal description from the Cooley subdivision. I thought that they would be really pressing us, but that was really the the number one fire and then they pulled it off. So we do have issues there and the ordinance is on it. The question is how to get Chip Warback over here to explain and have all those things come together at the same time.
He's got to be there.
Yeah. Seeing as there's nothing else on our agenda, does anybody want to make the motion to?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.